I'd like to call the order, the meeting in the Village Board for November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Cook, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's five.
At this time, we'll move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? And if so, please approach the podium and state your name. No public comment? This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four Village Board meeting?
We have a motion.
There are second.
Second.
Are there any modifications to those minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of four million, six hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars, twenty-four cents. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
There are second.
Second.
Any discussion on our warrants? Please call the roll.
Excuse me. Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes. Can I say motion carries? Take your time.
That's usually me.
Oh, excuse me.
All right. There are no items on the consent agenda. Under, uh, Community and Economic Develop- Development Ordinance granting a special use permit, motor ve- vehicle repair and/or service at twelve-twenty Mark Street. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Yeah, motion.
There are second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion? Curtis?
Yeah, so RP Trans Service, uh, seeking a motor vehicle repair and/or service special use permit at twelve-twenty Mark. Uh, this facility used to have a, a truck repair, uh, 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 business in there, uh, didn't have the proper, uh, special use permit and code changed. So the new user came in, uh, and is just looking to get up the code. Um, essentially, the main, the main issues here are going to be the outdoor storage in the back and maintaining that, uh, so some of the requirements are going to be striping and, uh, and just keeping a clean operation here, um, which the petitioners agreed to. Uh, they are here to answer any questions. Uh, CDC did recommend approval four to zero.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Want to take a break? Deputy? Number two is an ordinance granting a special use permit, motor vehicle repair and/or service at four oh five through four oh seven Dominic Court. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
There are second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So this was, uh, brought up during annual inspections. Uh, Parkville Auto has a secondary building, uh, off, uh, Dominic there, so just behind their, uh, Green Street facility, um, that had never had a business license. Um, so we require, uh, any, you know, you basically every single building needs a business license, even if it's the same business, even back-to-back like this. Uh, it allows us to, that's how we basically manage our annual inspections. That's how we get in there every year. Uh, so just cleaning up, they've been there for, I don't know, fifteen years, however long, uh, even in this part, in this, uh, property, which they expanded into. They don't actually do, uh, heavy motor vehicle repair, like engine repair. This is, you know, their auto body, uh, so nothing, uh, that would require grease trapping or anything like that. Um, all the, all the work is done inside the building. It's a clean operation. Again, just kind of bringing it up to code, uh, making sure they're, they're legal to our ordinances. Uh, CDC did recommend approval, uh, four zero.
Any question from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance granting a variation wall sign quantity at Two South York. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion.
There are second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So this is, uh, the old Second Bank. Um, they're kind of refreshing their signage, uh, and the variance is for essentially an additional wall sign on one of the walls. Uh, so nothing too, uh, you know, out of the ordinary here, basically just new signage. Um, uh, Olympic Signs is the one representing them here, who's going to be the sign company installing, uh, here to answer any questions if you need it. Uh, CDC did recommend approval four zero.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Four is an ordinance granting variations off-street loading facility location, tree canopy coverage and refuse area location at two-twenty Gateway Road. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion.
There are second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So yeah, this is the, the accurate parts, uh, building at the end of Gateway. Uh, they are expanding, uh, almost doubling their space there, kind of into their parking lot. They got a kind of big parking area and some green space. Uh, so the, the way the building expansion is, is working in order to maximize kind of the lot, they, they're doing a drive-in door, uh, that is facing the street, uh, and it goes through the parking lot. So that's basically, that's the main variance requirement here. We worked, uh, relatively excessively with, uh, with the architect and, uh, here to make sure that they could do the turning movements on site into this. So, uh, one of the big concerns, especially on this portion of Gateway, it's kind of dead end here. It's tight. Uh, it's, it's bu- it trucks maneuvering off of the street. We want to make them have their turning movements onto the site. So they worked with us and were able to accomplish that. So you can, you can actually pull into the site, uh, kind of just in front of the new building, then back in from there. So you shouldn't see very many movements from the street. Um, now, they do have a drive-in door, uh, at the existing facility, which will stay. That's been grandfathered in, so nothing's changing about that. But, uh, for the new, uh, uh, and that's a dock, sorry, not a drive-in door. That's a dock on the, on the existing facility. The drive-in door, uh, on this one is what we were concerned about. That's where the variance comes in. And then just because of the, the new parking lot, there's some, uh, landscaping and parking lot design with refuse area and stuff, uh, variations, but nothing too concerning. They will plant, uh, as you can see, uh, from this, uh, plenty of trees around the site and even up front where they can. So, uh, CDC did recommend approval four zero.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Five is an ordinance approving a special use transfer request at four eighty-five Podlin Drive. Do you have a motion?
You have a motion.
There are second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Yes, this is similar to a case we had, uh, last meeting where we are transferring a special use. We tie our special use permits to the user in our conditions of approval. Uh, so this is a, a truck repair, uh, facility at the end of Podlin. Uh, they lost one of the tenants and DMZ is taking over that space. Uh, nothing too out of the ordinary. All the conditions are the same, you know, kind of maintaining a clean property down there. Uh, they know, uh, and agree to all the conditions that were on the previous tenant. Uh, so CDC did recommend the approval of the transfer four to zero.
Question from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Uh, under administration, finance and legislation, we have an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-five tax levy in the amount of five million, four hundred eleven thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars for twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There are second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Finance Director, Finance Director, benefits, please.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. President and Board of Trustees. Due to the fiscal responsibility of the Village Board and Village Management, the Village is asking for approval from its Village Board to approve the twenty-twenty-five tax levy in the amount of five million, four hundred eleven dollars, four hundred eleven thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars, which is a zero percent increase in the previous year's tax levy amount that the Village received. I can talk to you about PTAL. That is a separate hearing that if, if the Village is going to levy more than five percent or CPI, there's a special hearing that needs to be required, but we are keeping our levy flat, so we do not have to talk about PTAL, but I just wanted to bring that up just in case. So you, I just wanted to also take this opportunity to say how financially healthy the Village is, and that is under all of your direction and supervision and along with the Village Manager. So I'm so glad to be here.
Thank you.
It's not easy to keep property taxes flat. It's one of the toughest parts of this job. Everything, as we know, has gotten more expensive, but staff has been creative. We've created efficiencies and we've, uh, created other revenue sources that make this possible. It's a, it's a gift, honestly, that we're able to do this. Um, and it was clearly the direction of the Village Board that we're not raising taxes, and so we were able to accomplish that. So this is the tax levy that we will be adopting.
Any question from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Thanks, Lisa. Two is an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year twenty-twenty-four to pay debt service on general obligation bonds, alter- alternate, alternate revenue source for the Village of Bensville, County of Cook and DuPage, Illinois. Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion.
There are second.
Second.
There being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Lisa?
Sure. So this also goes along with the tax levy. So this is the abatement orders, ordinance that will remove the burden of paying the principal and interest for the debt payments, uh, from the taxpayers onto the Village. Staff has determined that the identified revenue amounts that are being generated by the Village's alternative revenue sources are sufficient to cover the respective debt payments. So as I said previously, the burden of these respective debt payments will not fall on the Village property tax owners. And in your packet is attachment eight, which lists the six general obligation bonds that will be abated. So that will also be filed with the tax levy. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance adopting Amendment One to the annual budget for the Village of Bensville for the calendar year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion.
There are second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Lisa?
So this is related to the twenty-twenty-four calendar year budget. I know tonight we're going to be talking about twenty-twenty-five. There have not been any amendments that have been brought to the board, but what this addresses is, is at the end of the year, the auditors will determine if there is a general fund surplus. And back in October of twenty-twenty-two, the Village Board did pass a resolution that would talk about how to allocate any excess fund balance in the general fund policy. So at the end of twenty-twenty-three, the auditors had determined that there was a fifteen million, hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollar and sixty cent surplus. So based on that, now, when you hear a surplus, sometimes when we do budgets, we're budgeting to do projects. And if those projects don't happen, that means that that revenue is falling to the bottom of li- the bottom line, which creates a surplus, which may mean that, that we're going to spend more, more money the following year. So it's really hard to determine from year to year what, if you're going to have a surplus. But anyway, I'm addressing this through the fund balance policy, which is attached in here, and there's five different tiers. And the first tier, um, if you want to look at Exhibit One, it, it shows the different transfers between the funds, but ten million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, ninety-three dollars and ninety-two cents is going to remain in the general fund. Uh, some of it's going to cut, it covers some budget variances that when the budget was written, um, there were some, um, issues that need to be corrected with that, so that'll remain in the general fund. There are also two TIF districts that have expired, TIF seven and eleven, that had large deficit balances, and the general fund is going to cover that with that. Uh, the equipment fund had a small deficit balance as long, along with the refuse fund. So that's what that ten million dollars is going towards. Tier two, this is what they call the Village Stabilization Fund. Twenty-five percent of the remaining fund after tier one goes back to the general fund, and that's to cover any unexpected, unbudgeted, unexpected expenditure. So that's just a safety cushion to keep in the general fund. Uh, tier three, there is one million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. That is going to go towards the Village Police Pension Unfunded Liability. So that'll come to you later for approval for that payment, but that is part of how that, um, fund balance is reallocated. Tier four and tier five basically takes the remaining amount after everything else has been taken off and splits it, splits it in half between tier four and tier five. Tier four is one million, one ninety-two, two fifty-four, sixty-nine. That goes to pay off future debt payments if it isn't the advantage of the Village to pay that debt off early, meaning the interest rates are high or we're going to get a, a better deal if we refinance. So that will be in the debt, uh, service fund. And then the remainder of one thousand, one ninety-two, two fifty-four, sixty-nine, remember that number, because it's going to come up later in the budget when we talk about it, because that is there to fund storm sewer capital improvement projects. So that is how it's laid out. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I also just for some security, because this is my first time going through it, I had the external auditors, GW and Associates, take a look at it, just to make sure that my thinking and methodology was correct, and he agreed with the way the allocation was supposed to go down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is something that we created because the board said we wanted to be fiscally sound and want to address the long-term problems we had, which were police pension funding, our debt profile, and the lack of dedicated funding for stormwater and flooding, essentially. Um, this is a lot of money that we move around as a result of this, but it's only because we have that surplus in the general fund.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Four is an ordinance of the Village of Bensville, DuPage, Cook County, Illinois, amending Chapter Eight of Title Four and Title Thirteen of the Benson Village Code related to administrative adjudication. Uh, I'd like to have a motion to strike this from the agenda.
You have a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, you want to discuss this?
Yeah, real quick, uh, this is a important ordinance. This has got to change how we do adjudication in the Village of Bensville. Staff wants a little bit more time to work on it, um, so we hope to bring it back in the December meeting.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Five is a resolution authori- authorizing, five is a resolution approving twenty-twenty-four payment to the Village of Bensville Police Pension Fund in the amount of one million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars, sixty-two cents. Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion.
There are second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Lisa?
Sure. So this goes back to what I had just discussed with, as far as the fund balance policy. So this is on tier three. So this is the amount that's going to go towards the Police Pension Fund forward to fund its unfunded liability.
So this is over and above the statutory requirements that we try to fund. We need to have the, uh, pension funded at ninety percent by twenty forty.
Twenty forty.
By twenty forty. Uh, we are on track for that. Doing these extra payments will get us there quicker, and it's more financially sound for the Village to have this money earning interest in the Police Pension Fund rather than sitting in our bank account.
Any questions from the board?
Do you know approximately, like, when? If you, if you were to estimate?
It's tough because the surplus fluctuates from year to year. Uh, right now, the Police Pension Fund is at sixty-eight percent.
Right, sixty-eight percent.
Is at sixty-eight percent, so we're getting there. Um, I anticipate we'll probably be there closer to twenty thirty, then we'll be twenty forty.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Six is a resolution authorizing a three-year contract with Comcast Business to provide the Village of Bensville with seven hundred megabytes, is that what I'm saying there right?
Yes.
Fiber internet. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion.
There are second.
Second.
Motion and second, do we have discussion?
Yes, currently, the Village has fiber with one hundred megabytes up and one hundred megabytes down. That was sufficient for a period of time, but as we add more internet devices and, uh, we are uploading more to the internet for video, whether it be our social content or police video, um, we are quickly running into problems where internet slows down. Um, so we reached out to Comcast. We got a variety of pricing that we could get, everything from two hundred megabytes up to a gigabyte. Uh, this seven hundred megabytes seems that it will be the most cost-effective for us while also future-proofing it. Um, so it will allow us to do business faster.
Any question from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution, reallocate funds from the Holiday Magic Account Fund to the Bensville Wooddale Food Pantry. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion.
There are second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Yes, I'll take that one. Uh, so as we've discussed here, the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train for the last several years has come to the Village of Bensville. It's been a great event, and it accompanied with a ten thousand dollar check to the Bensville Wooddale Food Pantry. This year, for a variety of reasons, they are not coming to Bensville, they are going to Franklin Park instead, um, and they, the food pantry will be missing out on that ten thousand dollar donation. So the direction of the Village President, uh, he gave us the challenge of trying to fill that gap for the food pantry. One of the ways we did that was we reached out to some of our contractors and we were able to secure, uh, donation for Holiday Magic, which freed up money that we were going to spend of three thousand dollars for Holiday Magic. So it's the recommendation of staff that we take that money, we save that three thousand dollars and reallocate it to the Bensville Wooddale Food Pantry. Yeah, we've also done fundraising from, uh, the residents, businesses, uh, political organizations, and a, I anticipate that we will meet or exceed the ten thousand dollars that the food pantry is missing.
Cool. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Eight is a resolution of the Village of Bensville declaring sixty years of age as a recognized age of senior citizenship for the village-sponsored programs. Is there a motion to approve?
You've got a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the age of a senior is defined differently for different village programs, uh, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-five. Uh, it's kind of all over the place. We wanted to simplify that, um, and so we have benefits for our seniors, they can participate in our snowplow program or grass-cutting program, discounted water rate, discounted refuse rate, discounted rates at the rec, um, our senior center programming. Uh, so we wanted to codify that down to be sixty, which is below what most people would consider sixty, but we want to open up programming and discounts where possible for our residents. So this ord- this, uh, resolution would provide that starting January first, it's just widely understood across all village departments that sixty is the age of seniors for village programming and discounts.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Public Safety Committee ordinance amendment of the village of Bensonville, DuPage County, Illinois, amending chapter two of title five of the Bensonville Village Code to regulate motor vehicle parking. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion? Chief?
As you know, most of the village functions this year were very well attended and parking was at a bit of a shortage. So Joe Karachi and I met and got together and looked at some parking spaces that could be converted from no parking to four hour parking to allow parking. And then Joe found some other spaces he could put in some diagonal spaces and make even more parking. This ordinance amendment codifies that, so it becomes legal.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Under Recreation Community Building, we have resolution authorizing approval of purchase order to Equipment International Limited for the purchase of an Electrolux model EED 665 commercial washing machine and then not to exceed an amount of $12,745. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Sean, are you taking this?
Yes. At the edge ice rink on Jefferson Street, we've got our premium West locker room that's rented out by the Chicago Cougars Hockey Club. In that locker room, we've got a washing machine and two industrial sized dryers. They informed us that their washing machine stopped working after investigating, trying to repair. It was determined it was over 20 years old and needed to be replaced. We sought three different proposals and the low bid from Equipment International came in at $12,745 and we're moving to replace the broken washing machine.
I can tell you that the Cougars are a stinky bunch of hockey players and need this washing machine desperately.
And it's not just your home, average home washing.
Correct, and staff does get to use it as well for the cleaning department.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Just because we really need it.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Two is a resolution establishing guidelines and procedures for the 2024, 2025 forever young HVAC maintenance program. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion? Sean?
Yeah, if I could just jump in here and give the village president and the board credit for coming up with this idea for this program to, you know, help out our senior citizens. I think a fall HVAC maintenance program is important. Our senior community doesn't have a lot of funds to do this, and so what we are doing, we've signed an agreement with a company, Bensonville Company, and seniors, our senior forever young members will be able to apply for this program. It'll kind of be run like the senior grass cutting and senior snowplow. We have 100 spots. A fall inspection is $60, of which the village will cover half of that. So it'll be $30 for a resident to get their HVAC system inspected. If there's any other additional work that needs to be performed, the HVAC contractor will work with the resident directly to perform those repairs, and that will not be on the village to cover.
I want to say this is one of those programs that just came together in a very Bensonville way. The village president wanted to do something more. We initially started to look at dryer exhaust cleaning, got some quotes on that. This wasn't working. We were kind of racking our brain on it, then we were at a business, Chamber of Commerce after hours at CIS, which is Comfort Indoor Solutions, and then we kind of put this idea together pretty quickly. So I want to thank the village president for always thinking outside the box and willing to work with staff on coming up with new programs.
I want to thank staff for making it happen. Any questions from the board?
Is this going to be promoted at all? So the seniors know about it?
No, we're going to put it in a drawer and not tell anybody.
Yeah, we kicked this up. We announced this program at the last senior luncheon. We've got about 30 people so far interested in it. Kim Bush will be emailing all of our members, of which we've got about 145 members right now. She will be emailing them with all this information. The information is available on our website and social media will blast it out as well.
So it is capped at 100, and so that controls costs for us. But like I said, the very Bensonville program, we announced it before we approved it, so we were approving it. The Frankie Smolway.
If it works, it works. Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Comfort Indoor Solutions for the 2024, 2025 forever young HVAC maintenance program. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Discussion, as we're approving the contractor to do this. Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. So the first half of the meeting was for the entire village except for public work. So the second half of the meeting is just strictly public work, just so everybody knows that. Number one, resolution authorizing execution of extension number one of the two-year contract with Best Quality Cleaning Incorporated for janitorial services at the police and emergency management headquarters and village hall facility and not to exceed an amount of $59,754. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Joe, would you like to discuss this?
I've got plenty of time. So the village contracts out our janitorial services at the police department and at village hall each year. Best Quality Cleaning was the recipient of our two-year award back in 2022. That contract has been expired, or will expire at the end of this year. Staff has been very pleased with their work, so we looked into the contract. We have two one-year extension possibilities in the contract. First year is at a CPI increase of 2.67 percent. So the cost for the 2025 contract is $59,754. As we have not approved our budget yet, a number of the items on my agenda tonight will be asking, or at least mentioning that we are looking for your approval to use 2025 budgeted numbers when we're doing these approvals so that we know we're spending money we haven't really approved yet, but these have all been budgeted in the proposed budget. So it is staff's recommendation to approve this using 2025 funds.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of extension number one of the 2025 contract with ASE Align Ice Gapes Incorporated for turf chemical treatment program and then not to exceed an amount of $26,000. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Joe, we have discussion?
Yep, so similar contract turf chemical maintenance, we use this each year to fertilize and weed control some of our more pronounced areas in town. As you're driving down York Road, if we have some property there, we don't want to see a bunch of dandelions, so we treat those areas. ASE Align Ice Gapes was awarded a one-year contract last year. There are two one-year extensions possible for that one. This one comes with a 0% increase, no CPI increase, so it is again a $26,000 contract for 2025. Again, looking for approval to utilize 2025 funds to execute this contract.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing the way of competitive bidding and execute a one-year contract extension with Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for sand and stone delivery and debris hauling and then not to exceed one of $76,300. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion?
So again, sand and stone delivery and debris hauling is a very vital component of what Public Works does every day. They deliver different types of stone to us for water main breaks, other work that we do. They also haul out all our debris, our concrete, our asphalt. So this is a contract that's very important to Public Works to get our operations done. We've been utilizing Lindahl since 2010, as far as I can tell. We've always been very pleased with their service. We value the relationship we have with them. They're right in our backyard. They're a Village of Bensonville business. So historically, we have waived competitive bidding. We typically try to negotiate with Lindahl on minimal increases each year. Some years they're able to do it at no increase. Some years they go with the CPI. We didn't have an increase last year, so this year they did go back with a CPI increase of 3%. So our total contract cost is staying the same because this is a unit price item. We use it for what, you know, how we need it. We usually put a cap on it as to what we budget for. So this year we budgeted $76,300. The unit prices went up 3%, but we're hoping to keep the dollar amounts that we're using the same. So our recommendation to, again, utilize proposed 2025 budget numbers to approve this contract.
Questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing extension number two of the 2022, 2023 contract?
I believe it's the script notes there, there.
So that would be the 2024, 2025?
Or 25, 26.
So it'll be 2025, 26.
Yes.
Contract with Suburban Laboratories Incorporated for the 2025 wastewater sampling and analysis services and a not to exceed amount of $72,532.67. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Discussion on the 25, 26 contract.
Yeah, so the village does contract out our lab testing services. This is laboratory testing we do at our wastewater treatment plant, required to satisfy our permit with the EPA. It allows us to actually run a wastewater treatment plant. Suburban Labs was awarded a two-year contract back in 2021, which expired in 2023. We are looking to extend the second one-year contract extension on this project. Contract value in 2025 will be $72,532.67. This is a 3% CPI increase over the unit pricing from last year. So again, staff is requesting the use of 2025 funds to approve this contract extension.
So real quick, Joe, I think that title is correct. This is the second extension of the 22, 23 contract.
That is correct, yeah.
First extension, yeah, 24.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Five is a resolution authorizing a two-year contract with Suburban Laboratories Incorporated for drinking water sampling and analysis services and then not to exceed an amount of $21,600. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Discussion?
So similar to lab testing on our wastewater treatment plant, we also have to do lab testing on our drinking water production system. So a little bit different types of tests. We, our last contract did expire, so we went out to bid this year for another, a new two-year contract. Suburban Labs was the only contractor that bid the project. Their prices were very similar to what they were for us last year, so we are taking that as a competitive price. So we are looking to extend, looking to enter into this contract for the next two years, and this contract will also include two one-year extensions as well. So looking to utilize 2025 funds in the amount of $21,600, and that would be the total value of the two-year contract.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Six is a resolution formalizing and updating the village of Bensonville special needs sign policy. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
There are motion and a second. Discussion, please.
Yeah, so back in January of 2020, the village board reviewed and approved a special needs sign policy. Again, this is a policy that we established for the installation of signs that will, you know, basically read deaf children, blind children, disabled children, or autism child. We don't like the children at play signs. Those have been proven not to really work, but if you change the signs up a little bit, they tend to be a little bit more effective. So we reviewed that policy. The village board approved it. We started doing this over the last four years. Included in that policy was an age requirement that if a child became 15 years of age, they no longer would get the sign. Looking back on that policy and that portion of the policy, people with disabilities like that don't lose their disabilities at age 15. They may not be considered a child, but they still probably need the warning for the public and everything that they are living in the area. So we did have a request come up this year as one of our children turned 15, and they no longer would have been able to keep that sign in front of their house. We reviewed the policy, coming back to you to request that we remove the age requirement of the sign, keep the intent of the sign, of the policy the same. I think it's a benefit to the child, to the parents, and to the village. So it's our recommendation to modify the policy as it's in the agenda item, and then this also would formalize the policy into more of an official policy for us.
It's important that they re-up every year in case they move. To Joe's point about the signs not, you know, children at play being effective, because they get left up for 45 years. People become numb to them, so these are going to be installed only in areas where those kids actually are. We keep track of that.
Thanks for doing that for me, Joe.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution authorizing a design engineering services agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated of Sugar Grove, Illinois for the Brown Gate Stormwater Detention Basin Project and then not to exceed an amount of $24,980. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion?
And so if you recall, the village recently negotiated and purchased a piece of land that was previously owned by the school district too, over at the old Mohawk Elementary School site located on Hillside Avenue. The purchase of this land was intended to accommodate a stormwater detention basin in the future. We recently finished our Brown Gate subdivision project in which we kind of put in all of the backbone of that future detention basin when we were doing that project. So this proposed basin is intended to be a dry bottom basin. It's not going to have water in it all the time. It's intended to be a relief for the storm sewer up in that area. So if the storm sewer gets full and overtaxed, then it will release back into this detention basin. Once the storm sewer system can catch up, the water comes right back out of the basin. It's our intent to keep this as much of a park-like setting as possible. We're hoping that they can utilize it for soccer fields and things of that nature in the future. So again, we did most of the backbone storm sewer work and construction as part of the Brown Gate project. What's in front of you tonight is a new design engineering contract for EEI Engineering Enterprises. They were the designers on the Brown Gate project. They know the area very well. They actually have most of this basin already designed. So what we're looking to do is enter into this contract of $28,000 or $24,980. This will get them to do the final design documents so that we can actually put the plans and the specifications together to bid this project out in the spring of 2025, and we're hoping to have this constructed in 2025 to, into a new basin.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Eight is a resolution authorizing the execution of a final balancing change order number one with Everlast Blacktop Incorporated for the Illinois Route 19 Streetscape Improvement Phase III project for a decrease of $26,536.36 for a revised final contract amount of $441,436.64. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so this was a 2023 project that was substantially completed in October of 2023, but it's taken us about a year to get the final completion done, where we've approved all the landscaping, the punch list work and all of that. This was the last phase of the Irving Park Road Streetscape, in which we installed stamped concrete sidewalks. This one included some retaining walls and really cleaned up the area along Irving Park Road over those three projects. Everlast Blacktop was the approved contractor back in 2023. We've finished all of our work. We've agreed upon all our final quantities. As mentioned, it is a decrease of just over $26,500. Our final project cost of $441,000 and change, so staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Nine is a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number two with PVS Mini Bulk Incorporated for purchase and delivery of sodium thioculfate for an increase of $15,206.85 for a revised purchase order amount of $65,181.15. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so chemicals have been very difficult for us to estimate this past year for a number of different reasons. Droughts, temperature, things of that nature. We brought sodium thioculfate back to you back in September for a change order. This was also more of a safety change that we made. What we didn't realize is that the quantity of thioculfate over the bisulfate we used to use is much higher in quantity. The price per unit was about the same, but we did have to use more for its potency. We came to you with a change order back in September of just over $25,000. We're done using it for the year. It's a seasonal chemical. We have enough, if anything should arise for the rest of the year, so we're finalizing our numbers on this chemical for the year. We do need an additional $15,200 to pay all of our bills and get that contract in line for the end of the year. We'll be looking at our chemicals much more closely next year, trying to figure out where we can possibly save a little bit of money since their prices are constantly going up. They're very volatile at this point. So we'll look into the operation, see if we can keep our chemicals in line for next year.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Ten, resolution authorizing purchase order to Novel Air Technologies for purchase of one.
Desiccant wheel?
Desicent?
Desiccant.
Okay. Wheel for Edge 2 and then not to exceed an amount of $28,376. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second. Tell me about a desiccant wheel, Joe.
So a desiccant wheel, very vital component of our dehumidification systems at our ice rinks. Its basic function is to transfer the energy of the fresh air with the exhaust air so that we can balance our systems inside the facility and keep our temperatures as consistent as possible. Last year, we did approve a resolution to a company called Climate by Design. They were the original manufacturers of our dehumidification system. We've successfully replaced two of the desiccant wheels at the Edge facility utilizing Climate by Design. As we were getting into the third one, we found out that at some point in the past, a different upgrade to that desiccant wheel was performed. So the actual desiccant wheel that we thought was in there is not the one that was. It's a different manufacturer, different type, different style. So we basically need to return one of the three desiccant wheels we bought before and replace it with the OEM part for the replaced desiccant wheel that was done at some point since before 2010. So Novel Air is the supplier, the manufacturer, the sole source distributor of the actual desiccant wheel that we need to finish off that project. The cost of that is $28,376. We will be getting a refund for the desiccant wheel from Climate by Design minus the shipping fee back to them. This wheel actually is coming out about $15,000, $20,000 less than the one we purchased from Climate by Design, so we're going to save money, even though we got to go through the hassle doing this. Staff will do the install to keep that price down, and it's our recommendation to approve this purchase.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Eleven, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one, final, for the replacement water meter register heads for an increase of $50,663.38 for a revised amount not to exceed $275,438.38. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do have a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so back in 2014, we did a full village-wide water meter replacement program. All of our meters in our system, our 4,500 meters in our system were replaced. We did that with two different types of meters. One of them was a residential iPerl meter, a completely plastic magnetic meter, no moving parts, had a battery life and warranty of 20 years. And then most of our commercial meters and larger meters were done with the more standard traditional census omni-meters. Those had a battery life of 10 years. Moved to 2024, guess what? All our batteries are starting to go bad. So we had a program in place for last year. We came to you, we approved $225,000 to replace all of these commercial meters. As we were going through this process, again, using companies for different, different projects and different things that we do. Corin Maine is our company that we use for all of our water meters, our fire, some of our fire hydrants and things of that nature. We have found that some of our invoices were misappropriated to this purchase order, and because they were already posted and already paid, we can't take them off the purchase order. purchase order. So we have an additional $20,000, sorry, $20,206 that were accidentally put on this purchase order that I need to make up as part of this change order. On top of that, we had about 40 meters that, instead of just replacing the register head, we're going to be replacing the entire chamber, so it's a much more, a bigger component of the meter. Instead of it being like $425 for the register head, it's $960 for the chamber. So for 40 of those meters, we need to get an additional charge to actually make this entire program whole. So the cost of those additional meters was $46,657, but I get to return the 40 register heads, so I get a credit of $16,200. There's a bunch of math going on here. Bottom line, the total project cost is going to be $255,232, which means I need to put an extra $50,663 on that purchase order to make it happen. Did I confuse anybody?
Questions from the board on Joe's maths?
Grazie shuffle. Oh, boy.
Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries resolution is approved. I want that worksheet on my desk in the morning. Twelve is a resolution authorizing execution of final balance change order number one with J. Johnson Pavement Company for the 2024 Residential Street Improvement Project for an increase of $38,900.36 for a revised final contract amount of $1,178,769.36. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, the second, do we have discussion?
So this project was substantially complete back in June of this year. We did reach final completion of all the landscaping work and took acceptance of their landscaping in September. All of our contract quantities have been agreed upon. This final change order is an increase in the amount of $38,900. Most of the account of that increase was due to additional curb work that we added to the project, additional driveway aprons that we added to the project. We tried to do our best job in the beginning to be as conservative as possible, but as we started getting into there, there was a lot of actual resident requests, why did he get this and I didn't, and a lot of that kind of went on. And so we increased a few of the driveways and curb replacements, and that was the majority of the $38,900 that we increased this project for. For the 2025 project, we're going to bump that number up a little bit so this doesn't happen. So the total project cost was just over $1.17 million, and it's our recommendation to approve.
Question from the board. Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries the resolution is approved. Thirteen is resolution authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and the Village of Bensonville for the construction and maintenance responsibilities of the Channel E? What's that?
County Highway A.
Oh, County Highway.
It says Channel E.
County Highway's on.
I don't speak County Highway. York Road Multi-Use Path. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, the second, discussion.
So village staff has been working over the last couple of years with the tollway and with DuPage County on a proposed installation of a multi-use bike path along the west side of Irving Park Road. I'm sorry, of York Road. That path will be from Gateway, where they finished most of their construction at the Irving and York intersection, all the way up to the new and proposed ramp Q5 that the tollway's putting in. It's the very northernmost ring ramp for the entrance into the western O'Hare area. This path is part of our regional bike path. It's part of our local bike path. It's filling in the gaps, basically, and trying to get our whole bike network, bike network paid for and with as much help and assistance from other entities as possible. So before we deny, it's an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County. In this intergovernmental agreement, we talk a little bit about the sharing of costs between the county and the village for the bike path. Since there is already a five-foot sidewalk out there that the county owns, and we need to put in at least a minimum eight-foot bike path, the county has agreed to pay for five eighths of that path. They'll pay for the design, the construction, and the construction engineering of five eighths of the path, which leaves the remaining three eighths for the village to pay. That total comes out to be about $334,219 is our estimate, so that's one of the items in the IGA. Another item is that the village will then have the maintenance responsibility for the bike path moving forward. We maintain all of our other bike paths in town. This is not an unusual request and pretty consistent across the board. And then the last thing is going to be, as part of the design and construction, we don't anticipate it, but if there is a need for any property acquisition, right-of-way acquisition, that the village would be the lead agency to make that happen. We feel that we have very minimal conflicts that are going to take place along this route. I think that the location of where we might have some conflicts, we have some actually good relationships with the property owners. We're hoping to get any right-of-way acquisition that we need donated by them. This will be an improvement for them, an aesthetic improvement, as well as a access improvement for them. So those are the three basic components of the IGA. We don't expect this bike path to be constructed until after those ramps are all put in in likely '26, so we're looking at a 2027 construction, but this agreement gets us underway with the design and moving forward with the tollway and the county on this endeavor. This is going to leave one last gap in our bike path plan. That'll be from ramp Q up to Elk Row Village. That is going to be a difficult gap to fill. Likely will be elevated on some sort of a bridge structure. Goes right over the creek. It's adjacent to a land bridge that the county owns on York Road. So our thought is that once we have all of these built, we're going to start the design now, but it would be a very good candidate for grant funding to fill in the final gap. We're looking at the ITEP grant program, probably in '27, '28 timeframe. So with all that said, we're hoping to have this entire bike path plan and our regional bike path in place in the next five years.
And Joe, for that last phase, that's where we've negotiated with the city of Chicago and built, I mean, we negotiated for $300,000.
$300,000 worth of design and construction of that. It's going to be well over a million dollars for this last segment, and that's why I think the ITEP grant is going to be very important. Those will always come with local matches, and since this is our TIF-12 district, it's our intent to utilize TIF-12 money to complete the construction of that bike path.
Joe, did you have a third-party independent person measure the five eighths?
No, but I can do the math. It's five eighths to eight eighths.
Do you want another math worksheet? Joe can do a five-eighth worksheet for you.
I'll put that on the back of the worksheet.
It's going to be a nap.
Is it an answer key?
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries resolution approved. Joe's done. Village President's remarks.
Nope.
Oh, sorry about that. I pressed on the wrong one. I just wanted it to end, right? Number 14 is resolution, the most important one, I guess. Resolution authorizing execution of purchase order to Roche Ford for the purchase of nine vehicles in a not to exceed amount of $450,758.50. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, the second, is there, oh, discussion.
Yes, so this one, this purchase order will include the purchase of four new police squad patrol SUVs, two Ford Escape plug-in hybrids for the Community Economic Development Department, two Ford F-250 pickup trucks for Public Works, and one Ford Transit Cargo van for the rec department. Staff would like to place these orders through Roche now in order to secure the vehicles in a timely fashion. It's been very difficult to get vehicles from anybody in a timely manner, so we're hoping to get these purchased here shortly and have them in our possession early part of 2025. We did add in the cost of extended warranties for some of these vehicles, similar to what we did last board meeting, the plug-in hybrids, the police patrol vehicles, those that we feel an extended warranty would benefit us. We've done it. If we're not going to put miles or time on these vehicles, we're not bothering with the warranties. The total cost of the vehicles plus warranties is the $450,000 and change, so we are looking to, again, requesting the use of 2025 funds to purchase these vehicles, which are part of our 2025 budget.
Question from the board. Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries the resolution is approved. Now we are done with Joe. Village President's remarks. We have a proclamation declaring November 19th, 2024 Arbor Day in the Village of Bensonville. Would the deputy clerk please read the proclamation?
Tree City USA Official Proclamation. Whereas 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agricultural established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautifies our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Frank D. Simone, Village President of Bensonville, does hereby proclaim November 19th, 2024 as Arbor Day in the Village of Bensonville, and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And where further, he urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated 19th day of November 2024.
Corey, are you crying?